Our Planning Commission meeting. Casey, would you, are we set up and ready? All right. Welcome, everyone, to our October 2nd Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting. We will begin, and let's start with. Who called?
Daniel Henderson. First, here. Michael Whitmer. Bill House.
Here.
Casey Minter.
Here.
John Inlow.
Here.
Don Flansburgh.
Here.
Mylan Nguyen. Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
Chris Milton.
Here.
Eric Crump.
Here.
Marvin Wright. Nate Allen.
Here.
David Kelly. Jennifer Carr.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we will begin with public comments. And we'll start with public comment back here.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Aaron Bill. I represent the firm like I can track. So I will be serving as the new appointee moving forward, replace the bourbon right. I'm not yet officially appointed. The tribal council wanted to look into more. Pre-creation to the ball. Who would be the appointee? So I expect to be appointed. Within a month, so. I'm here, you know, as a, you know, to listen, but I look forward to working here.
Aaron, thank you. Thank you for introducing yourself. Appreciate that. Do we have any other public comments?
I have none.
All right. Then I am looking for approval of the agenda.
Look to prove as presented.
Again, Commissioner Drinkwater. Motion for approval, Bill How, Commissioner Alquez, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the approval of the minutes from our April, or August 7th, 2024 Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting. Are there any notes, corrections to those minutes? If not, I'd be looking for a motion.
Would you approve the minutes for the September 4th meeting?
Commissioner Crump has a motion, but a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Minter.
Please.
Question?
Motion supposed to include August 7th and September 4th?
We're going to do them separately.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we're doing September 4th only right now?
We're doing August 7th.
I will amend my motion. Move to per the minutes for the August 7th.
All right, Commissioner Crump, motion for the August 7th meeting, second. Commissioner Minter, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes from the September 4th Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission workshop. Corrections? Edits? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Drinkwater.
In low second.
Commissioner Inlow, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda, item six, is a report on water quality credit program. Turn it over to Kim Brigham and Nick Brothers.
Thank you, Chairman. Everybody for the record, members of the commission, this in a local agreement was. Executed in 2021 to assist our region with water quality goals on the Trekkie River. And Nick Brothers is with the City Arena. He's an associate civil engineer. He's been managing the project and he's here to give us a patient on the results of the project. And with that, off the timer here, Nick, Nick, let me just set up with. Cetacean, I'm going to share my.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much, Commission. I'm. You know, feel welcome to. Give you an update, want to let you know all where we're at on this project. Where we've gotten to and maybe some of the things to consider in your priority setting exercise coming up. All right, so like I said, my intent is to provide you an update. On the progress and where we're at and maybe what's needed. As a reminder, yeah, September 2021, we entered into. Both the scope of work with environmental incentives as our consultant for the project and the ILA to fund it. The goal was to really look at our regional needs. Do a lot of stakeholder outreach and input. They were going to provide a program booklet that outlined items of a successful program for our region. And provide a draft working document. We plan to have support for a pilot transaction under this program effort, but did not quite make it over that. So the kickoff for the project actually started in the spring of 2022 after some. Research and. Real quick, I want to go over just a reminder of what a water quality crediting program could be. So water quality crediting program is. A framework for creating a market-based incentive structure to address water quality concerns. So we want to take all these different projects that have a benefit for water quality and create a framework to trade them and incentivize cooperation. Here's some of the benefits, so. We were pursuing the benefits of flexibility with our permit compliance for permitted dischargers. We wanted to look at where we can get multi-benefit projects, not just water quality, or perhaps the improvement of public spaces and other benefits. Where could increase partnering opportunities and improve water quality. Last one might be one of the more important drivers, which is what is the most cost-effective way to improve water quality by with the. So that's exactly what we have for the region. We have the TNDL, we have. These limits. So what makes the most sense for a credit? Well, we listed in there is one pound of total nitrogen, one pound of total phosphorus, and one pound of TDS. These would each be a separate item. And again. To create flexibility to comply with the TNDL and also get net environmental benefit. So during that booklet exercise, we shared with stakeholders, we came up with these program elements. The draft program document outlines operations, eligibility, and then actual crediting, how these all work. And if I go into too much detail in any one of these, we'll be here for hours, though we won't. But this is essentially the framework that our document came out with. Program operations, we identified goals and responsibilities for participants in the program. A program administrator, someone who's a project proponent proposes or executes a project that has a water quality benefit, creates a credit. Someone who's a credit user, like our wastewater facilities that may claim a credit for compliance. The regulator. And someone who is called a verifier, someone who ensures that the water quality benefits actually being achieved. So that's the sections there. And go over, this is kind of drafted the credit process. You have planning, that would include an application to the regulator, what's proposed. It would have the crediting methodology that's proposed, whatever that project might be. Example might be a stream restoration along a tributary. They will review and approve that as a concept. Then you have product development and implementation. Primary credit verification is sort of the process by yes, they went and built what they said they were going to build. And then you have this sort of continuous process of tracking and use of a credit. By either the project proponent, or if that gets traded to someone who's the credit user. I envision that sometimes that's the same person. The program identified eligible areas. Currently, we've identified that we would use the. Upstream of Lockwood Bridge is that's a point of concern for the TNDL. There are other programs around the country that have watershed-based trading programs, particularly for nutrients. However, right now, this is the limitation that's been sort of agreed to. The program document provides some example project types. Although it's in no way intended to limit innovative projects or things that would have other benefit to watershed. Another key component of trading programs is ratios. And those are often used to cover uncertainty because when we're proposing a project, we're also often using a modeled impact. So because there's some uncertainty in a model, or we're using non-point source programs and trading those credits to a point source discharger. There's usually a ratio. To cover the uncertainty of the actual impact. So there's usually a two to one ratio is what was agreed to by the stakeholders. And we are proposing also a net environmental benefit ratio. That also reduces the credit received, but is intended to retire some portion of every project to the river as a net environmental benefit. Credit method. We did not specify in the program document what would be a required model to use or anything else for any type of project. We want to leave it up to the project proponents. However, we point to resources like fluid loading estimating tool, just provided by EPA and used heavily in region five. Or other modeling software. Oftentimes, we imagine that a credit method will have to show what's the precondition and what's the proposed postcondition of the project. All right, this is what the registry looks like at the moment. It's essentially a really cool Excel file. And there's. Bunch of different tabs that will allow the project to be tracked and each credit to be broken down for each project and then assigned to a user. So that would be a public document that everyone could go there and verify where's that credit, where, who's got it right now. And kind of a history of that. And also like this is the project screen. So each project has a line there when the project was constructed and verified and what the total. Pounds of benefit were for each fluid type. Finally, it's important that the program has adaptive management. We heard from stakeholders, the need to come back and revise the program to improve its efficacy as we implement it. So right now, it's sort of every two-year period, we would have. The program administrator, open it up, reach out to stakeholders for another collaboration, just to provide impact and make any amendments to how it's going. Change the program document. So where we're at now, that effort took us through June of this last year. Our scope and our agreement with environmental centers is completed. We ended up with a working draft of the program document. Two project templates, the application template, what information was suggested to be provided to the regulator or program administrator? For consideration, as well as a product maintenance plan template. Any project that was constructed, we assume is going to have to be maintained to make sure they're maintaining their credit. As well as that credit registry document. What's needed moving forward? We don't have an official program administrator designated. So for the region, we would have to, I guess, choose somebody to be that party to both keep the program document and facilitate the. Deep back. An amendment mechanism. We do not have acceptance from NDP or EPA, so. While we've addressed comments from stakeholders, including NDP, there's further conversations that need to happen before we get sort of a yes, you can go forward. So what's potentially proposed or for you to maybe consider in your priority setting is should we do a phase two? If we did, what would we want that to be? Our recommendation would be if the phase two is considered, that we would get support to facilitate further discussions with NDP and EPA region nine to support the program adoption. And a part of that buy-in by the regulatory agencies is the proposed like pilot project. Say, hey, let's try this. We're only expecting, you know, maybe a few pounds of credit, depending on what the project type is. But that gives us a chance to go through the details of the program document, really implement it and see. What's going to work and what's not going to work, both for the regulator and for the region. With that, I think it's a pretty comprehensive summary, but I didn't get too far into details. If there's any questions or discussion, happy to answer any questions about the process we went through or. Anything else with where we're at.
Thank you, Nick. Any questions for Nick? Done.
All right, so you did not include California in this. I mean, let's assume. NDP, EPA approves it. Is there a possibility to add California into this in the future?
Yeah. My preference is to use like a HUC 12 watershed-based approach and allow upstream and downstream for this point. But we have to have regulator approval and. Essentially interstate agreement with the water control board.
Was there pushback on that concept or we just didn't go, we didn't discuss it?
There was pushback on that concept.
With the interstate?
Even the downstream section. Yeah, so EPA provides a guidance for developing trading programs. And one of the. Issues to consider is hotspots. Depending on the pollutant. That matters more or less. So in our case, we're dealing with nutrients. Is there? Hotspot concern? Right now, we've restrained it to upstream of the compliance point, just. To avoid that concern.
Good question, any follow-up?
No.
You're thinking though.
Oh, yeah. All right. There.
Yeah. Other comments?
I'm excited for this program because we do have subject to sewer conversions. The cost for those is very expensive. It doesn't lend itself well for. The residents wanting to make those conversions because of the cost to do so until they have a failure. And then in a failure, it's like the worst thing, right? Because you're looking at red tagging and not being able to. And so my motivation in this program would be if there was some sort of benefit that we could then justify the use of. Sewer user funds for, or future connection fee funds for doing projects that would actually mitigate. The effects of those subject systems that are close to the river and are. We could, we could show probable cause or waters getting to the river. But that would come out in the credit analysis of that program. And so that's, that's a reason why Reno would be interested in this program specifically. But not just that, there are a lot of other things that could also be helpful. Anything that we could do to reduce erosion in different areas would also have a very positive effect on the train loading. Harder to measure because you're dealing with intermittent periods of time, but still has a, has an impact.
Yes, Jennifer.
Jennifer Carr, for the record, one of the things we also vaddled around is the concept of whether or not this would fit into the larger discussion about potential. Solution to the TMDL problem we have with Tom Wharf and the waiver that we were starting to discuss, but needs more. Idea development, whether or not it would help in that arena if we chose as a community to go. Towards a waiver process for struggling with.
Any other comments? I, I, yes.
So. On the slide back here, it says that, you know, potential phase two would be as, you know, the sport of a pilot project. Are there any just conceptual pilot projects that have been tossed around during this, this planning period? That we would look at potentially moving forward with, or that would be up for discussion? Yeah, that's a good question, like, do we have one on deck? No, there's several other projects like John alluded to. We have septic conversion projects that are being pursued, although lack funding. We have. Some stabilization projects in our tributaries that while the loading is relatively low. Those projects need to be done and they. Some cases don't have dedicated funding or enough funding to do a lot of those stream restorations. There's also the potential for things like reestablishing some wetland projects, things like that. But no, there's not a project in specific that's on deck to go forward. Probably take nominations.
Agree that that would be helpful, right? So that we have a pilot size. A pilot sized project that we could agree on methodology and how we. All right, this is not up for action. Yes, Eric.
Just.
Commissioner Crump, excuse me.
One comment, just seems given, you wrote in a comment, but the intertie, has there been any sort of tie with flood authority and their activities and how these two programs could play off each other's benefits from them?
In my mind, yeah, so when I talk about multi-benefit projects, I'm talking about partnering with other agencies where a project goal might be flood control measures or some other. Even parks within our waterways. Where you can do a multi-benefit project that has a water quality component that's now can be funded.
Okay. This item is not up for action, so if there are no further questions. We, Nick, we will move to item number seven.
Report question and direction staff on the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission workshop. It's held September 4th and October 2nd.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. Kim Rigdon for the record. Let me adjust the slides here real quick. I don't think we. I'm going to stop sharing for just a second here. Okay. The Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission has held two workshops, one on September 4th and one on October 2nd. Both of these workshops have been held so that we could develop a path forward in making recommendations to the Western Regional Water Commission. On looking at the potential for a more coordinated regional approach to planning for wastewater utilities and effluent disposal and management. At the previous workshops, the members of the commission have identified numerous opportunities and constraints that need to be considered in looking at the process moving forward. Staff is looking to the Water Planning Commission to give us direction on how we would like to move forward. With developing a framework for this approach, possibly a feasibility study. Or identifying subject matter experts or request qualifications. We're looking for direction from the board to let us know how we should move forward post the workshops. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if I need to give any more background on that. We just got out of the workshop. I wanted to make sure that I gave some background to the public who's in attendance at the meeting today. But we, I can turn the timer over to you to kind of continue facilitating that conversation and.
Thank you, yeah. So the, what we'd be looking for here is a potential motion on the next step that we would. Next step in timing of when we would be able to bring something to, back to this body and to the Western Region Water Commission. As it relates to. Moving forward, a feasibility study, what would that solicitation look like for the study? And what would be included in that? Do we have? Any, any discussion here from this group or a motion?
Josh. I'll try. I make a motion that the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission form a subcommittee. Reno, Sparks, Marshall County, and KAMWA representatives to. Develop a draft approach. Of how we would move forward with this. Process in developing either a statement of qualifications or requests for proposals. To. Put forward a proposed approach or consideration. At our next regularly scheduled. Just end, Kim?
November 6th.
6th ahead of the joint meeting with the Western Regional Water Planning Commission.
So.
And then, yes, this is a feasibility study. Looking at, that would be the first step. Does this concept make sense or not?
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, but I have a question, want to make sure.
And I appreciate it. Because once I get a second, then we can.
Now we can talk about this.
Yes.
So just from a timing perspective, isn't our next meeting, the joint meeting, the November meeting? So we would be, we, the Water Planning Commission would bring forward a recommendation to the work at that meeting that they would act on. Is, is your expectation that they would then, we'd say, hey, this is what we think we should do and hopefully they'll say, yes, go do that. And then, then it'll come back to us to go find, do issue the SOQ or their RFP or whatever it's a big. To find a consultant, is that right?
I think there's one clarification to that, since there's only four of us putting together this proposed approach. Based on our attorney's comments during the workshop. That we would, as a Northern Water Planning Commission, take action on that proposed approach at that joint workshop before it's presented to Western.
At the same workshop? Or not workshop, but the joint meeting?
Exactly.
All right, and then it would.
Right. Mr. Chairman, based on that, I think it might be more appropriate to refer to this group as a working group. Who's going to put together a proposal for the N W P C's consideration. Thank you.
Fine, I accept that change.
All right, so we have a motion amended to be, to form a working group made up of representatives from Marshall County, Reno, Sparks, KAMWA. To develop the draft approach of either an SOQ or RFP for consideration. At the November 6th joint meeting, first by Northern Water Planning Commission, and if approved by that commission, to be forwarded to the Western Region Water Commission for their consideration. Does that sound like summer, summarization?
Way better than what I said.
And the second.
Yeah, that's good.
That meets the requirements. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
We're through that.
All right, item number eight, action discussions and fiscal year 2026 priority setting session with possible direction to staff on the results.
Cool. Thank you, Chairman. Kim Rigdon for the record. Give me one second, I want to make sure my tech is working. And. Dance, which I can't, give me one second. Come on, okay. Fantastic. Okay, members of the commission, I don't know if I already said this, Kim Brigham for the record, I'm a little bit. Here, in October, we hold a priority setting, what we call a workshop in the past. It's, it's converted now into what we're calling a workshops, a priority setting exercise. Less of a workshop, the more an exercise and a regularly scheduled meeting. And the purpose of this is to affirm our fiscal year 26, 2026 priorities that will then inform the WRWC budget moving forward, but not fiscal year. You have a list of projects in your attachment 8A of your board packet. And in that list of projects. And in that list of projects, that list of projects is a brief description of current priorities as well as ongoing full year priorities and some concept projects to be added. What we're looking to achieve today is I will be giving everybody an opportunity, all of our voting members an opportunity to click on a QR code that was put in front of you or the link or we can also send out an email very quickly. Jen has this email set up that she's going to forward to all of our voting members so that you can participate in the survey. Before we do that, I wanted to briefly pull up, uh, the survey, go through the projects as needed and have a brief discussion on any or answer questions on any of the projects. Some of them you'll be really familiar with. We do them every year. Some of them are new concept projects and some of them you might just need some updates on, on status and where those projects are at. As a brief overview of what the ranking process might look like, again, it's completely up to you as a Water Planning Commission member to vote and, and on these as kind of a one to five star as you were to rank a hotel, for example. If you give a hotel a one star, it's, it's, it's less of a priority for you than a five star would be. Hey, we want to really make sure this is a critical project that gets moved forward to fiscal year 26. So I put a sample ranking process up on the screen that you can use, um, at your discretion. The only thing we ask is that whatever process you use, use it consistently to rank each of the projects. So a one star under this ranking process would mean that priority could possibly wait to be funded in another year. Two stars would mean the priority could be partially funded in that year, but not at the expense of other critical priorities. And that is a two or a three, I'm sorry. And four stars would be the priority is critical. It should be at least partially funded in that fiscal year. And five stars is this is a critical project and should be fully funded for that fiscal year. So that would be an example of how you can rank those projects. Again, you can choose your own criteria. Just be consistent in how you're picking our priorities and affirming those priorities. So I'll go ahead and stop sharing this for a moment. Share the survey so that we can go through the projects. Okay, so what you see in your board packet is questionnaire. And so you'll be taken to the questions where we ask that you put your full name, full first and last name. For open meeting law purposes, we need to make sure that, uh, each member of the commission is identified and your responses are able to be displayed on the screen post the survey. This is not a it's not an incognito survey. You have to show your responses for, um, to make sure we're, we're referring those priorities openly. So please put your first and last name. First name, last initial will work for some of you, Johns. I'm sure we could figure it out. Um, and so the first categories are, I, I set these up. It's kind of a weird thing, but I put these in here so that if we end up having more priorities and budget than we have money for, this is the year 26, which I have not encountered this yet. But if we did, ranking these in order of highest priority to lowest priority for your agency would help us do some type of a matrix scale on the budget. So I haven't had to do this yet, but I'd like to leave this in there because it helps us to say, okay, well, if wastewater planning rises to the top and yet we have some a lot of, uh, five star projects for flood projects and we have wastewater projects that didn't rank us high, we don't have enough budget for all of them. Staff can come up with some type of, you know, weighted matrix where we can start applying that to the funding. So that's why this piece is important for us if we need to utilize that. So if you, all you have to do is take your finger and slide those in the order of importance for your order of priority. And then the rest of the question, the projects are pretty self-explanatory. This is where you'll do your one to five star ranking. There's a brief description of that project that you can read through. Um, if there's any questions on those projects, please let me know and we can discuss those before the rankings, but we won't be discussing them during the ranking. We want everybody to have a really good idea what the projects are, have the freedom to rank. And then afterwards, we can have additional discussion based on those rankings if we need to change or adjust things after, after you've taken the survey. So the first two projects are our Desert Research Institute projects. Those are the precinct monitoring and washout evaporate transpiration projects. These are projects that have been funded every year since I've been here. And from what I understand, the precinct monitoring has been going on for a couple decades. Uh, the benefits of these projects are we're collecting data and information that can be used in the future for any research or studies or outcomes. We're always talking about, you know, we never have enough data. This is an opportunity for, you know, this is kind of a small pot of our money to continue collecting that data and to use it as we move forward in various studies. The, let's see if I can scroll down. Of course, we have our water usage review program that's sponsored through the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. We have funded this every year also. This program assists, uh, the staff at Tumwa to go out and assist customers to determine if they have any water leaks and evaluate water savings. Um, and the scope of work supports 43% of the funding for our program. The Certified Landscape Technician Program is another program that is, this is an organization that's been a little bit different for us. Um, we, we haven't had a lot of contact. Our board has kind of fallen apart a little bit and fall apart, but they don't have active board members. They meet irregularly. We've been working with staff to try to figure out what their needs are moving forward. They do want to continue with the funding, but we haven't really, um, have been able to work with them on what that scope really looks like moving forward. They've changed organizations and certification programs a couple of times since we've been on board. We'd like to support them. We still need to work out the base of this budget works for them, but we still need to work out a few of the details on the scope of work and how they're going to funding that scope of work. The Regional Water Management Coordination, um, through the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. This program, we, we put a little bit addition, more funding in for fiscal year 26. The reason we did that was because we're going through the Regional Water Management Plan update and we plan to utilize, they are so familiar with our wastewater projects, the regionalization discussions. Um, water utilities are familiar with a lot of what we're doing. They're building a mapping program for effluent management, regional effluent management. And we're hoping to continue utilizing them so that we can incorporate these tools into our website and pare down our plan a little bit, have our plan be more of an actionable plan and memorialize a lot of the information and the data in the plan into our education piece on our website. So we've added additional funding for that, um, and to retain their staff to continue helping the region with, you know, the regional water management coordination activities, coordinating with data instincts on communication and outreach, helping with the uh, water reuse demonstration projects, enhanced purified water projects and those sorts of activities. So this is some funding to continue to utilize, uh, and partner with Nevada Water Innovation Institute. The Data Instincts on Water Nevada Communication Plan. This is Mark Milan. They have been instrumental in helping with the, the regionalization, um, communication plan for advanced purified water. They've also brought many of us and our politicians and we would like to continue bringing staff and other members of our community to advanced purified water facility tours, facility site visits and other areas. Um, and continue to have advanced purified water efforts in the, in the region. Sierra Nevada Journeys developed a recycled water STEM education program. They're making some modifications to that program. It would require $50,000 a year for them to continue bringing the STEM education on water recycling to the schools. And this is a beloved program that our, uh, elected officials support. They want to be invited to some of these. They heard, uh, Sean Hill give his presentation on the Sierra Nevada Journeys efforts and really appreciated that. So this is the newer program. We just started funding this last year and it's been a huge success. The Enhanced Wastewater Source Control Program, that is the one that Nevada Water Innovations Institute is supporting our regional partners in looking at some monitoring frameworks for the water reclamation facilities to look at what's coming into the facilities as we're looking at enhanced purified water potential at the water reclamation facilities. They're working, uh, with Tumwa right now and the city of Reno to, on a monitoring program. They're finalizing the draft of the Tumwa uh, monitoring plan and are moving on to developing the Tumwa plan. Hope like to continue. Truckee Meadows Stormwater Quality Permit Program, Quality Management Program. This is the Permit Coordinating Committee, uh, that the agency has been supporting through the Western Regional Water Commission since I've been here and prior. I think during the economic downturn, it, it became a, a priority for the Western Regional Water Commission to support that program. And it's, uh, managed through an interlocal agreement with the city of Reno. The Truckee River, One Truckee River, this is another program that our elected officials very much support. This, yeah, the Truckee River Foundation's scope of work has a river friendly living educational program that they're implementing currently. They have been key to getting some of the bathrooms installed along the river to help the, keep the river clean and the homeless population there. Um, and we spoke with Iris and she's, she thinks that the $75,000 that we give her every quarter tremendously with her being able to continue being the executive director and provide the additional funding opportunities that they have to implement that plan and program. Watershed Assessments, this is a city of Reno Stormwater Committee project. We funded this last year. You heard a presentation from Teresa Jones last year. They are working on some of those watershed assessments this year. And this is said that we can continue to support those efforts moving forward. I think this is a good compliment to uh, what we're trying to do with the Water Quality Credit Training Program, the Source Water Protection Program and the Stormwater Program. So it supports our region.
And this also helps with our grant applications for 2019.
For 318. Yes, thank you. And then, go ahead.
Am I allowed to?
Absolutely. Interrupt me, please.
Um, is, so you said Teresa Jones was the one that gave the. Is this all storm water, uh, like in the city and the county and everything? Like, it's not just the city of Reno, storm water shed?
No, this is the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee. It's supported by Washoe County Sparks and Reno.
Okay.
So they should be working, my understanding is, is that they hold their regular meetings and they prioritize the watersheds that they're focused on based on their meeting schedules. And we heard from Nick on the Water Quality Credit Program Phase 2, which would, uh, be a project that would help us support continued communications with N D E P and, uh, possibly a pilot project moving forward. Truckee Meadows, uh, the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee has been looking, they like to keep this on as a funding potential when their MS4 permit is updated and becomes available, they're going to have to update their stormwater management plan. So they're going to look for support from Western Regional to assist with updating the stormwater management plan when that permit is updated. That's what this project is supporting.
I believe it is coming up. Is that correct?
Yep.
I haven't heard a status update, but yeah, I believe so. It's in traffic.
Steamboat Ditch Flood Evaluation Study Phase 2, we have this on our last, um, priorities thing as well. This is a Washoe County project. You can, you evaluating flood control outlet improvements on the steamboat ditch, uh, from across the Hunter Creek to Evans Creek. Um, and so I know that the Washoe County is working on developing that second phase scope of work. I don't know if you have any other comments on that, but.
No, I would just add that it's not just Washoe County. It's also City of Reno. So we partnered through, I mean, phase one and continue that relationship in the phase two, developing that script of work for actually modeling and then leading to implementation.
Okay. And then we also have the Cold Springs Water Balance. It's an ongoing project right now, so we do need to keep that funding in the budget for that to continue. Uh, they're really in the beginning stages of that investigation right now, so we'll learn more as we move toward on next phases of that project and or implementation of the outcome of those findings.
So this is a new funding just.
We keep it in, you know, it, it would, it would make new funding available, but it also keeps our current funding in the queue for continuing to implement that. And then the shared work program, this is a WRWC staff support program. Jeremy Smith, the Director of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, he is committed to providing staff with assistance on a variety of G I S support projects. He's assisting with incorporating natural resources plan information into the regional water management plan and developing our website, educational pieces and other work products. They also provide some administrative support and meeting transcription and posting our website. And then the PFAS Consulting Services, um, we engaged with the PFAS consultant Jacobs last year to provide presentations to our elected officials on PFAS. And he's done a great job providing the education and bringing updates with the regulatory, excuse me, from, uh, the regulatory environment, regulatory framework. I'm sorry. Actually, I've had this cold. What, so Scott Greco was the consultant that was working for Jacobs at the time. He has recently left Jacobs. The longer that consulting firm. We are investigating, uh, a different avenue, uh, getting the support that we need. It might be a combination of looking at having somebody more local who understands some more of the local issues that we're dealing with that could help us and provide technical assistance at the local level and then also possibly retaining somebody like Scott who is really monitoring the regulatory environment at the federal and state level. So we're, we would still like to continue receiving support for this. We haven't determined a budget for that because we need to work out what the scopes of work would look like, but this is an important piece for the Western Regional Water Commission. They would like to continue getting education on what's happening with PFAS in the region. And the next one, this is a Washoe County supported project. This is one of our concept projects. Regulations tracking consulting services. So the idea behind this is to hire a professional consultant to keep her finger on the pulse of regulations that are coming down. There's UCMR 6 coming up, I believe. And I'm not sure what's on that list yet, but we have contaminants, emerging concern. There's regulatory, um, you know, fluctuations and uncertainty. And what this would allow us to do is have a regional, uh, finger on the pulse for looking at the broader spectrum, not just drinking water, but stormwater, wastewater reuse, um, Clean Water Act, um, excuse me, Drinking Water Act, um, implementation discussions that are happening at the national level and how that might impact our local water planning. So this is a concept project. We have, we have a scope of work in development. If this is prioritized, we will definitely send this out to the members of the commission to make sure that you have an opportunity to look at the scope of work and understand better, you know, where this might be going. We also want to make sure we're not duplicating activities. So if the agencies have individual regulations tracking that's going on, we don't want to hire a consultant to duplicate efforts. So we need to work out some of those details a little bit. That's probably move on with that project. But Eric, did I, that was a Washoe County project. I want to make sure I captured that. And then of course, our regionalization of wastewater utilities and effluent disposal. This was our last agenda item. This is a budget to be determined based on what we come up with for that. Um, framework we're moving forward and we can prioritize that funding. That will obviously come to the commission as the scope of work, uh, is developed. And the last two projects are, have been, are being sponsored by the city of Reno, Truckee Meadows Regional Drainage Manual Update. I know we've had this on our priorities thing before. We removed it because there wasn't really movement forward on this, um, but it's time for us to bring it back. The manual hasn't been updated since 2009 and it looks like a time for us to engage consultant to, uh, move forward. And then stream gauge installations in Southwest Washoe County and Reno. And John, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to those two?
Um, I would just say on the regional drainage manual, um, we have any updates since 2009. There have been some, um, specific changes that have occurred in there. Um, some minor modifications, but it has not been reviewed since that period of time. And I don't know what the level of quality of plants uh, each of the agencies are getting from the engineering community, but, um, as it relates to, to drainage, uh, flood and drainage, but, uh, we think it's, we think it's timely for us to update that man. we think it's timely for us to update that manual and do some education with the development community to help improve precedence and the standards that we have.
So, is this a regional? Regional, okay, but just Reno managed?
Yeah, when I, when I put the entity on there, all of, all of our projects are regional projects. When I put the entity, we just have a sponsor where we would do a local agreement with that particular agency to accomplish that.
And the stream gauge installations in Southwest Washoe, that would be some of the, just helping us understand the stormwater in real time, if you will, as it relates to White's, White's Creek.
We have three gauges, sound like?
We just commissioned another one, we're working with the GS to have straight information installed right there at Veterans Parkway.
Graves will cross that one off.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a couple, there's a couple other ones. It would be going towards that effort, but yes.
We'll be capturing Thomas, White's, other stormwater drainage, you know, tailwater right there at Veterans Parkway, right east of Land. So.
Nick and Joe and John are all hearing that?
Is this the funding for the replacement and improvements to the existing ones that are getting very far apart? Or is this new?
My understanding of this was for new installations.
And is that just for the capital costs and the ongoing operation and maintenance that can be turned over to the USGS eventually? Or ran by Reno?
That would be the plan was the USGS.
Because those costs are, which you're monitoring for, they're upwards of twenty thousand dollars a year.
If I could just add something, Danielle Henderson, for the record. So the flood project also works cooperatively with USGS and the National Weather Service to monitor and maintain a network of gauges for our flood warning system. And so I'd be really interested in being part of this conversation. We also have gauging on White's Creek, among other sites. And we're, we're at a point where we're trying to address our existing, outstanding program and sort of where we go in the future. So I would be really interested in participating in this group conversation if that's feasible.
Of course, it's easy. That's easy.
Okay, so I just wanted to give a quick overview, I didn't get into a lot of detail, so if there's any questions, other clarifications, I'm going to get projects, any discussion that you had, John?
Can we add a project?
We can.
I was just going to ask if there's time to kind of write in.
We do, we can, I, it would just take, before we go into the exercise, I just need to adjust a little bit, but I can do it.
Some discussion on that? So I represent Washoe County Water Conservation District. Just the other day, one of our irrigators was mentioning how lately this summer doesn't have enough time to take from Steamboat Creek to send his irrigation customers, even though there's a full Washoe Lake. Problem is, there's now a disconnect between Big Washoe and Little Washoe Lake. There used to be a channel which is now choked up by Willows and Sevigny. So that Big Washoe Lake has all this water and it's not making its way to Little. And so the dam downstream is basically non-functional. And there's a lot of problems with that, there's potential flooding issues. You have water right holders whose water is being stranded in the lake. You know, the dam really, yeah, limited control. And there really is a potential for flooding. You know, even Chad Blanchard, the Water Master's Office was saying, you know, boy, I've been worried about that because, because of this disconnect, it's clogged up, the arteries are clogged up. And you have a full Washoe Lake going into winter. And where's that water going to go? It's going to go over three ninety-five. So, so the, you know, in up, in down. Water Master's Office, Water Managers, Tom Wharf, Tom Wharf, I think we all have a big stake in that. I think I'd like to see if we can find money to, you know, put out our P to have someone study what's going on.
As I recall, also, there were some issues with the, with the dam itself in the recent past, so.
Just want to clarify, you're looking to, we have a policy that we don't fund construction. Figure out what's going on. Okay, and then what is the problem and what, you know, recommend solutions?
The, kind of for car for the record, the issue of the dam itself is on the DC and our directors radar. There's been discussions. Okay, so how do we want to add this, do we want to add this as a, you said a potential RFP? So you want to do a study?
Yeah, study, study to determine, determine the issues, you know, look at the problems, identify the problems and recommend, you know, the next steps.
Okay.
With the dam, and, and the dam is post, it's beyond.
I would say the dam is downstream of Washoe Lake and Little Washoe Lake adjacent to Old Virginia. In essence, Little Washoe Lake.
I can call it Little Washoe, okay, downstream of Little Washoe Lake.
You're really, you have the connectivity between the two lakes.
Yes.
And larger, and the dam itself also.
Yeah, that's, that's the larger issue that needs to be.
Do you have a budget you want to propose or do you want to make that as to be determined budget?
I don't know.
Seventy-nine hundred thousand bucks?
A hundred thousand?
I can tell you something.
We need to do an AGR. And so this would be Tom Wharf taking the lead on this side of the lake.
We're not actually a conservation district?
Would it be through the Conservation District then?
Yes.
Yes, both.
Yes. It's a conservation district, but there's so many stakeholders. Literally, they're a very large stakeholder.
Well, it's the Washoe County, what is the acronym? Show story, is that Washoe Story?
No, no, it's just Washoe County Water Conservation District.
ECWCD.
Right, right, it was a working acronym, I'm sorry about that. All right, can I go right? Okay.
Well, and I mean, it sounded like we wanted to perhaps provide some clarity to this particular title because it's not necessarily the dam itself, right, but talking about the interconnectivity between Big Washoe, Little Washoe. But I think if we were to vote on this right now and this gets memorialized into record, and then we don't really look at it, if the public says it'll be the dam itself, I think this just lacks clarity.
Big Washoe and Little Washoe.
With the impacts too? Downstream?
That's true, it's because we're talking about flooding. If the water can't get out of Big Washoe, well, it's going to get out, it's just going to go west instead of north.
You discussed at the beginning those irrigation impacts as well. Water right, certain, certain water right holders.
I'm just saying, it was a really good year to get in there and do some work on the dam.
We don't have any of those in the one minute.
Are you going to have to reset the link or is this going to like?
This will add to the survey, and while you guys are taking the survey, I'm just going to adjust my worksheet that tallies everything up. So it'll, it'll be instantaneous in the survey.
So it's separate, I took the survey.
Some of those.
You just have to be forgiving if I spelt something wrong because I made a some of a play.
Yes, this is a good time to ask some clarifying questions on some of these projects.
Yes, this is a great time.
So looking at the Certified Landscape Technician Exam project, are there any metrics involved in this? Do we know how many people will be certified?
That's a really great question, and they send us a report annually, they hold an annual conference. They give us the participation numbers of the conference that we haven't really received with the numbers on the exam piece.
Sounds great content, I just feel well to be.
Wait, yeah, and, and it sounds like it was a really great, you know, program previously, but they've had a lot of turnover in staff and a lot of turnover on their board. And we're trying to kind of get a better idea of how they're doing things moving forward.
Any other questions?
Um, I have a question, so. I know that, so you had said earlier, Commissioner, drink water, that by precedent, we don't typically fund construction projects.
By policy.
By policy, okay, and so I was curious about the, the second to the last one now, the steamboat, or not, the, the gauge, right? The actual construction of the gauge, is that more so because the creation of the gauge is for?
Yes, for instrumentation as opposed to a capital project.
Right, okay.
Yes, and, and just for a little more clarity, we do, we have funded the Stormwater Committee for some of their activities.
Right, we've been funded a construction project under protest by.
Under protest by one of us. Which led to a policy.
Yeah, even though the protester was funded by the opponent, so.
I'm just saying. We're the Water Planning Commission, planning.
It's all good, we could relive that some other time.
Any other questions, discussion, questions?
So just, you're like, my previous survey and then I can start again.
Remove your previous survey. Oh, you did it?
Yeah, when you were whole along, I was just doing it as you were doing it.
I can do the years, hold on, let me get a result and I'll. Oh, look at, three of you did.
See?
You three did not follow instructions.
You did, vote early, vote often, that's a in low toss.
Okay, hold on, give me a second to make some.
Right, so Chris, you're going to have to vote again when we start again and.
I can.
I guess we're just overachievers.
Yes.
I'm going to stop sharing for a second while I make a few adjustments.
I thought you were giving us the answers to the test.
So it, it does appear if you were in the survey, if you're adding something, it's not, it's not coming.
I'm going to select these three and I'm going to delete them, they're not in there. Trying to get into the game.
You're going to have another one to delete.
Okay, hey, hold on, let me make sure that that. All right, are there any more discussion?
Can I just ask, so toward the beginning of your presentation, you had that slide, it was about ranking?
Yes, do you want me to display that?
Would you please, and do we have to hold back for that or is it?
No, you can, this is just a sample.
Okay.
Um, you can do it, or you want, it can, all we ask is that you're consistent and how you rank each project.
That's what I was wondering, so just our relative priorities.
Just scroll, yeah, move them up and down into order. Okay.
And did you, did you see mine come in late and have you gotten this?
I'm going to share the screen real quick so they. I, I think I deleted it, but let me check. Oh, no, you're right, Eric, I need to delete yours.
If it doesn't populate in here, you might have to delete me too. Yeah, it seems as though if we had the survey open while we were doing, we hadn't hit submit yet, and you added another question, we're not getting that.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not going to hit, take the survey again until you add, is that?
I deleted you, I would close it out and re-click the link.
I have my laptop if anybody wants.
If you already started taking the survey when I was talking in that last question, the last project doesn't show up and you have to get out.
I think you're reading your space.
Yes.
So.
Take the survey?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yes. Commissioner.
Assessments, Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee for sixty-five thousand dollars. Somebody made a clarifying comment that that would help us be eligible for the three seventeen.
Three nineteen.
Three twenty, yeah, I, I know zero of storm water, but I thought that we were not eligible for that three nineteen money anyway.
Yes, but well, not officially, then we are in conversations with NDEP now on the TMDL discussions. They had, they denied a couple of our projects. Basically, EPA has made comments to NDEP that they're, they would like to see the TMDL revisited. And they made a bunch of comments on our water, so we have that Regional Stormwater Watershed Management. And if you're water quality planning, has informally let us know that there is issues with that plan, there's some comments on that plan, it was already conditionally approved by EPA and NDEP, of course, when Birgit and I were there. And recently, they've made some comments that we need to have some more discussions on some edits to that plan or inclusions because it doesn't meet their nine element requirements. I think that's going to get cleared up, I might hope that's going to get cleared up in November. We have scheduled a series of meetings with them to present that plan to them and have EPA and NDEP at the table so that we can do that, we're scheduling that for November eighteenth.
Obviously optimistic that you'll be.
We are, I'm optimistic, I think it's been a matter of staff turnover, new leadership in that program, not fully understanding how that program was developed, and we just need to have some meetings with them to show them where those elements have been satisfied.
Assuming they say thumbs up, then this project would help us if that helped.
Yes, that is our hope, yes.
Your last, the question you added is on a one to ten?
Oh, my God, okay.
Don't change it now because we're all.
People just score it one to five, you guys.
I can score it ten just so it breaks everything.
Thank you, my gosh. I think I am ready, Chair.
All right.
Okay, I'm now ready to see the results. So for open meeting law purposes, I'm going to share my screen and I will quickly just scan through all the titles and then I'll show you the table of the results at the end, so be sure and scroll. Wait, let me put it at a hundred and fifty because that seemed to be what you could. I think I have everybody, so you can see everybody's name. Oh, there we go, it's taking a minute for it to catch up. So you can see the date, you can see the time that you took the survey, how long it took you to complete the survey and whether you used the link or the code, the QR code, which is good information for me because I know what people prefer. And then I have your names, I like John's no more dots, that was the best, you win, John. All right, so the pink headings here, it'll catch up, give us a second. And now it's not scrolling. See, I can move it this way. It's so strange, it won't.
I'm like, so the survey.
For me. It was like freeze frame, you know, move.
Thank you for that.
Just see, it says the mar is moving across, but it's not moving in my screen here. See, it's moving that way. Oh, it's because my screen is locked, it's locked. All right, so let's see, we can. Everything make me go wrong.
Guys are doing great.
Okay, I'm, I'm freezing the panes now so you can see what we're doing, all right. There you go.
We got the.
All right, let me get back to a hundred and fifty percent. All right, let me get back to a hundred and fifty percent. Uh, okay, so now that should be pretty good for you. Okay, so the pink are the ones that you did at the overarching topics that you did in order. And I'm just going to scroll through these quickly so that you kind of see the diverse scores. This is just our process to make sure that it's on record for open meeting law. All right, and then when we click here to the results, this is what we like to look at. So let me zoom in on this. So this is where you can see from top to bottom, top scoring ranked projects. So the number one was the regional management coordination. That's our NWII project. And then the enhanced source control, data instincts, one water Nevada communication plan, regionalization of wastewater utilities, Big Washoe connection to Little Washoe impact study, stormwater permit coordinating committee, program implementation, PCAST consultant, Tom Wharf water usage review, TMRPA shared work program, STEM education with SNJ, stormwater permit coordinating committee, uh stormwater management program update, Trucky Meadows Regional Drainage Manual update, Steamboat Ditch flood evaluation study phase two, water quality credit program, Truckee River Fund, One Truckee River Plan Implementation, Washoe County Cold Springs Water Balance, Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee Watershed Assessments, the DRI precip monitoring, regulations tracking, consulting services, Washoe ET, Aqua Transpiration Project, stream gauge installations in Southwest Washoe County Reno, and then the N L A Technical Certification. And then here's a graph of all those projects. Largest to smallest, I think some of them aren't really, you could see there's like little spaces in between because I've got it. There's too many on there for them to show up in between. On, it's too big. So there's a list of our priorities in order, a ranking and our topics, rose wastewater, reclaimed water, rose top and flood control, uh, stormwater, then water supply and water conservation.
Stormwater, the second, flood control, third. They're not in order.
Yeah, yeah, these ones are not in order. And this is weird because if I try to sort those in order, it'll mess up the graph. So I don't.
You zoom in?
Yeah.
Let's zoom in.
Do you want me to zoom in on the table percentages piece or just? So with that, I like to show you, and I did include the Big Washoe, Little Washoe into the budget. This is the typical budget um that I present to the Western Federal Water Commission. They, the Northern Nevada Water Management Commission's recommendation every year for professional services. I added every single project on the list. Um, some of them again have a to be determined budget depending on what the scopes of words and budgets might be. And you'll see at the, here I added the Big Washoe, Little Washoe connectivity and penalties. And a hundred thousand dollars for that. For a grand total, I have one point six million. At our budget last year for our professional services, and this is not showing contingency, but with our contingency funding was two point one million.
But we have a lot of TVB.
We have a lot of TVBs we need to fill in.
Yes, okay.
So. And I, you know, for any of the projects that are um new projects that will have a new scope of work, those will come before the commission, before we approve the budgets for those. This is just an affirmation of our priorities and potentially how we might include them into the budget. This will come to you again a couple of times before we approve the budget.
Okay. Um, this item is for possible actions. Not required. What type of action would you, would you be sure? Um, if we were going to have something, it could be to uh move to accept the results. Could just be to uh just not take any action.
All right.
Leaving the room. We're going to conclude. Item number eight, go to item number nine. Discussion and possible direction to staff regarding agenda items, dates and locations for future Northern Nevada water planning.
Thank you, Chairman. Let me end the screen share. All right, so our next meeting is November sixth before at one thirty P M. This is our concurrent meeting with the Western Regional Water Commission. And we know at the Trucky Meadows Water Authority uh for our conference rooms there. So, and we plan on bringing the regionalization approach for wastewater utility planning, flood management and any other, and the priority setting uh workshop results. If there's any other agenda items you'd like me to do, please let me know. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, so with that, are there other items that we would want to include or other future meetings? Yep, not, um, again, this action is not required. We are already scheduled for the next meeting date. So that would be redundant. So I think we will conclude with item nine and move to item ten, commission comments. Any member of the commission would like to make a comment? Chris?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, then we'll go to item, we'll conclude item of ten and we'll go to item eleven, staff comments.
No staff comments, Chairman. Thank you.
All right, with that, uh, we will move to item twelve, public comments. Chairman, any public comments? Any public comment in the room? Seeing none. Move to item thirteen. Do I have a motion?
You do here, third.
Mr. Huck, seconded by Commissioner Drinkwater, all papers be eye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.